All the maybe to order. Waiting on. I think we're working together for this. Go ahead and look, did everyone have a chance to look at the minutes, it's July twenty eighth first? Issues or corrections? Make a motion. Second. All those in favor of the previous minutes? September fifteenth minutes. Issues or corrections? Even though it's not. Alright, any changes to that? Wait, Russian. Russian, give me a second. Russian is saying, I want some favor of the previous September fifteenth minutes.
Alright.
New business. We'll break right down.
Yes, so. When we initially were adopting the zoning ordinance, it included this first section on livestock and beekeeping, particularly chickens and bees, what ended up being more controversial at the public hearing. So, the board asked that the section be removed and to send it back to the planning board. Mainly, the controversy was around chickens and permitting the numbers. So, we went with last, last couple of meetings, we looked at what to do best for the ordinance that we needed to revisit. And this one popped up, so. Giving you our animal ordinance that's in our current code, but it's not included in our zoning ordinance. So, you could see the other animal issues that are regulated. But as I was looking for towns that had ordinances regulating chickens, there really are not many. And there are not many that are, they're our size either. So, we've got examples from Greensboro, Knightdale, Albemarle. Pretty much it comes down to numbers and some of them regulate lot size. But I wanted to give you these for you to look over and then we can talk about what you would like included in ours. Are we going to do bees too, or just let them evolve? There were no advantages found. One of these peppered bees.
Biggest concern was the number.
The number, yes, for chickens.
Changes. What if we just do chickens?
Okay. So, I think. One thing I see, um, also is like difference from presidency.
Can't even lessen seven hours square feet, can't.
Potentially leading to chickens in business districts. I think that's this. It's been a topic of discussion in the past. And that's trickier now too with. Presidential space and, yeah. But that could get defined down by. Lot size or green space size. If you don't have a green space for. People that's poultry.
And what's currently here, you said that was in a different section?
Yes, and this is mainly animals need to be contained on leachives. Other nuisance fighting people. This one was the proposed, yes.
During the discussion, there was. Turns about this. This has the proposed, it says after five, you know, the ten number.
Yes, I think it was, I think it was initially five and then they raised the ten and that was.
Were people concerned? Too low or too high?
I think there was too low, that was a complicated meeting anyways with the social districts. So, I think those two issues that occur each other. For those of you that own chickens, what do you all think is the reasonable number? Like to manage. I can't seem to ever have more than fifteen. Anytime I get more, something comes and takes one, so I've had up to eighteen. I would think twenty, twenty is my top number. I currently have fifteen. What's your thoughts on that? I'm on five acres. Right, no, you can't see, right, exactly, so that. A little under five acres, but you cannot see another home from our house. You're also on the edge of town too, right? So. Right.
I don't like ten to be a lot.
No, I have friends in, it's like Atlanta, they have, ten is a big number, like in town living. They have. Yeah, ten to. Eight to ten would probably be like a large backyard block. I have eight right now. I have a runabout as big as this one. And that feels like the maximum for me, my lot size is like, I've had up to twelve. I feel like anytime you get more than ten, the. The management of them is like, there's more cleaning, more middleheads, more food, you know, it becomes a bit, a bigger deal. But that's just my personal experience, if I had a larger lot and we're at a bigger run, that was probably. Yeah, and I let mine spring range on our property, not all the time. We've got an area. But, um. Yeah, it's. When I had just, when we first got them, we just had one of those coops that you could get at Tractor Supply that had a little run on it. It was really about the size of this table and they marketed for having six ends in there. That to me felt very inhumane, like I didn't like having them in there at all. Like if you're having to keep them in a coop that size, I mean. When they sell them as marketable for six ends, I don't know if you can say that. You can't have them in there, but. Do you say ten was your number?
Makes sense to have different quantities based on lot sizes.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that in the Greensboro, they have handle like. Flyers, they have different standards, a large lot, which will fall down.
What they're gonna be about is where it'd be.
Yeah, oh wow, okay.
Cause there's four, forty-three thousand five hundred sixty square feet. Up seven thousand, yes.
And I can think most of the properties in the U C D are smaller than that. I remember looking up relative or the G I S. Even their property quarter.
Downtown?
Oh, it's in R one.
Oh, R one. Probably smaller.
You can use your neighbors and neighbors divided off. In like our neighborhood or the downtown? Your neighborhood, oh, okay. I was thinking better for the smaller sized box.
It doesn't, it go all the way down.
Yeah. It doesn't fall away.
I think my house. Oh, I've been noticed in all.
I think a lot of discussion came up with the downtown business district because there is currently any property with. A large amount of it's on there. So.
And roosters.
And, and roosters.
Anyways, they were three.
They were, they're fenced in now.
Yeah, I think that was through days.
Yeah.
That was, that was, I think, I felt like the biggest issue was they were. They were, could be the buddy wandering down the street.
And I understand that, you know, I had eaten at Mad Batter and. I don't personally mind a chicken walking by, but if the chicken hops up on the tables, they're not in the sanitary.
Yeah.
But that's also a larger lot, is that larger, not more than seven thousand? Not to specifically regulate that person or that, that thing, but just like as an example. Cause that is a larger lot that the.
Some of the lots are actually buildings.
Right, like Jeffrey's house.
Is it all?
Houses, all houses, right.
So, we've figured out how much. Outdoor space or whatever.
And you could do distance, distance from the, distance from the dwelling, distance from the neighbor's dwelling, distance from the property line. So, you can do it by zoning and say just like not allowed. District or something along those lines, or. Whatever, that's not what I'm proposing necessarily. But if you, but if you, if you regulate the lot size and the distance from the neighbor's dwelling, that would eliminate a lot of the houses. Almost all of the houses in the downtown business district anyway, just from the.
You know, something in there about having to be.
I think they should definitely.
Close, somebody on there. Now, that's seven, ten square. If you put a chicken on the lawn. From the, from the house, it wouldn't be fifteen feet. If the ordinance calls, ordinance here calls to be.
Which doesn't. Like if I look at mine, the example of my property, where the chickens are, they're right up against the property line. Um, but there's not a house there. It gets, it's way, it's like halfway down the property and like the house is way up there. So, I can put it fifty feet away from my neighbor's fence line, but it would be way closer than where it is now. You know what I'm saying? And like, maybe if she built down there later, that would become an issue. Uh, but if you had like. Distance from the residence.
Uh, it's like, I can, then from the, you know. It's gotta be in the Greensboro flyer here, fifty feet, two thousand fifty feet from the neighbor's house.
Yeah.
On a lot of size, on a smaller.
But also off the property, when you. Asheville, when I was looking this up, they say, uh. The cage or pen cannot be within ten feet of the outer limit of the lot unless it's greater than fifty feet from the neighbor household. Something like a little bit. Couldn't say that, not like. Will you say that again? Uh, so it's considered a nuisance, okay? If there is a cage or pen within ten feet of the lot outer limit, unless it's greater than fifty feet from a neighbor and household.
You're kind of seeing where it's at.
I think proximity to a neighbor's. As a chicken owner would be more important than where it, where it is on your lot. Cause a lot of times, if, like for instance, if you're having to have a bee, I mean, like this is even showing, you're like, it's. Right in your front yard or, but you know, like you're looking at it where you kind of want to tuck it over to the side, so.
Prominent feature.
In your landscape or maybe you do. Yeah, and that's, but you're still a pretty rural community, so. Nice to use something. Right, that's part of it.
Mention nuisance there. There. If there be things in there about. They started to separate ordinance on nuisance. I'm wondering if, if, even if you met the regulations, that's the way you just keep your chickens. Neighbors or whatever.
Right.
Separately or, or at this point?
I feel like they've got it in the zoning ordinance because of the setbacks. We do currently have public nuisance animal examples and prohibitions in ours. No, there, that's not part of those zoning. They're not specific. But it gets tough with the roosters, I think, because, you know, excessively making disturbing noises, these are all very subjective things. And. You would. If you were to complain to the town about a nuisance, or whatever, that could develop a relationship with your neighbors, you know. And, uh, so a lot of people may annoy by the noise, but not, never say anything, so.
Is there anything I can, I can tell you about rooster really about?
Well, yeah, because it's, um, a lot of the people talking at the meeting that day, they were talking about the sustainability of the flock. And like, if you have a rooster, you can continually renew your, your flock of chickens as well as protection for the chickens. Like there are desirable things about having a rooster.
But I just, I don't think in a downtown district or a higher density district, you have that right over your neighbor's ride.
Exactly.
To have peace and quiet, you know, or to have business not interfered with, so. Notice here in the Greens, they talks about that, it says, uh, it can't be heard all the time. Rooster could be pretty loud. I just. I can hear it from my house in the morning at one thirty. From, I can hear it down here from County Street. Not like waking up, my neighbor's town dog makes a lot of noise when I walk outside at five thirty-two, I understand that.
But when a rooster's pro, it's not.
Right, no, right, yes, the night time, the dog also barks at. Three o'clock in the morning, squirrel running across the road, so I, I don't live beside that, but I do have a dog. I feel like reading, the, reading what our ordinance, that we, we came up with is very similar to everything else we argue. I think we're also not getting access from other counties, except for maybe the distance from. But if we still have a minimum set accident like that. They looked it up, they, they didn't reinvent the wheel, they're like, hey. We're gonna turn it into another. First one, that's the one.
Yes.
The only one, if I look at that, the chicken keep, keeping that I would like, you know, that, it kind of would be. That I would have a problem with, I think is not, it's kind of, it hurts the lot sizes and it's not allowed people to use their, their property would be the one at number three. You're looking number three on the propel, there's everything else in there I like, but I think what's, in my opinion, look good. If you want to put the chicken in your front yard, it's like, who am I? Who am I to tell someone they can't put it in their front yard now? All the other setbacks and need to be, you know, keeping up the hoop, stuff like that, who wants a chicken in the front door? I guess kind of that. I'm opposed to keep it in there, but that's just the only one, I was like, I'm okay with everything, in my opinion, but not standardized, who wants a chicken in the front yard?
Especially if your house is set way back to the boat and that's like your largest, pretty high slide.
Oh, yeah, kind of, right. I don't know, but yeah, that's a. An arbitrary thing in a community doesn't, is not a plan out. We're living in the mountains where some people's front yard is straight down and some people's front yard, not, not like everybody's got a half acre lot. You've got three tenths of an acre in the front and you've got your big back, you've got the rest of your lot is lying in that. And that's no, you know, that's the easy way of planning everywhere else, it's not, you know, mountains. Have a look at the other, at the proposed one here, see what I think about what it is, what changes would not want to. Start with it and make changes from there. Those guys are brown.
And what are we going to do, a permit for chickens or are we gonna skip the permit?
There where it has the quantity of chickens, uh, ten. Did we do that based on lot size and different quantities allowed on different?
And then actually an acre, I'm playing. All the, uh, larger acres? For an acre.
I mean, is there any, is, again, my question, not having, is there any in the down, mainly in the downtown district where we're, we're having this? Like, is there anything, does anybody have over an, over an acre of land in the downtown district? I guess maybe. The only real like thing, like unless you consider. Right? People behind, up counts, like I understand you're my neighbor, but. That's the bad bitch truth.
What's your, um.
Part of the downtown district.
White one right here that has the big yard, I don't know if it's considered in the downtown district. Oh, yeah, um, I think, I think that's our lot density residential.
Johnny's not putting chickens.
I think it's.
Johnny, Johnny, it's Alan Brown that said that about you. Talking about Johnny. Positive, I don't know.
Sorry, Paul. I was curious about, oh, I was thinking about the bigger lot, so I didn't know if that was considered in. Uh, I think this might be residential, okay. And it's per lot, right, not by a commercial, like if you own two, side by side lots. Or that's it, I would think.
If it's continuous, then. I'm heated together. So, it's Jackson Street that way and the river and the creek, this way?
Yeah, pretty much, there were tracks. The street's governmental.
Well, I'm doing math looking at like.
So, the red house that sits up on the hill behind or across the street from the innovation, is that downtown? That one is downtown. There's much of a yard there. The one right by. The one that sits behind a coffee shop, yeah. But I would think.
Two different questions here, are, do we want to allow it in all those districts? Period by district or? My, I think it's just an issue with. With the chickens, with the chickens.
The line, except that I'm here.
But.
Back screening actions. Yeah, and gentes and so. Lots of residential stuff further up the hill, but. Further up the hill, but not. The need to be differently. What are we going for with the downtown district district? Acquaint, do you know, touristy, less possible thing? Mostly.
Not, this one's the being. Three.
Because if they're all around, make your things, how are they managing that?
Because this kind of way it read right now. It's for all of our. You know. Areas, the rooster only permitting the low density residential. So yeah, I would be okay with like, you have ten, ten units, you know. Seven thousand feet or if you're twenty, above seven thousand square feet. Half. That lot, yeah, seven thousand, more than, you had ten thousand square feet, like twenty ends. The ability of that seems.
I mean, at some point it's.
Yeah.
Under an acre.
Do you have to have a minimum lot size of seven thousand, with minimum, the minimum lot size of seven thousand square feet?
Yeah, yeah, I've donated with the. Big thing.
What you need, you need to have a medical, because you gotta have a minimum of seven thousand square feet.
And that's how much an acre?
It's like a sixty.
And then to have ten.
To have, yeah.
Seven, seven thousand square feet to one acre. Is that gonna eliminate? One business that, for the. A lot of times, you have grand father that stuff in, right? We removed the grandfathering from. This, from the zoning ordinance. It could not be grandfathered in, it did not.
I'm not okay with that number hanging. Because I don't want my neighbor to, you know, something even more this, I mean, I think Johnny's though. I mean. You know, it's like some of these neighborhoods, we're saying right now, any of these neighborhoods. Pretty close quarter. My neighbor's house.
Yeah, and the people that need to speak at the meeting are not necessarily the voice of all the people that we should be considering. And, and like, I have certain, talking about this, people I've heard. Like, the apartment dwellers up the street are complaining about roosters nearby. Like, I had a rooster and it's easily a hundred feet away from the nearby residences, but they knew a rooster was around. They would comment on it, like, most of the time. Not eating, but.
They see where a hundred people from roosting, but twenty nine hundred, they didn't sell.
Right, you being, you. Potentially put a number on the rooster, like. There are people. That raise them for extracurricular activities. I think that's the legal of the state, though. There are any, there should only be one, I think. That should. Regulation. Less than one acre, no roosters. Maybe within that first. Yeah, the less than acre no. When they do protect, I will. Within that, yeah, I mean, and dogs.
Just there's place for roost, right?
Dogs can be just as annoying and getting ends and, I mean, if we start getting ends, almost worth them. Well, it should be, I think, I think it should be all of the mess foul. I don't think it should be chickens necessarily. So I think we shouldn't be doing. Animals in the house, oh rabbits, yeah. I thought you said that's true. Rabbits don't make much noise. Yeah, so.
Or certain, lots, minimum lot size needs or exceeds seven thousand square feet up to five acres are permitted. And lot size exceeds four thousand, forty, or forty eight thousand five hundred fifty square feet. Up to ten, up to twenty minutes.
Except for, I don't know, ten, instead, I can be said five.
Yeah, five, yeah, ten, yeah.
Minimum of seven thousand, because you have to have a minimum of seven thousand.
Reason, right, minimum of seven thousand square feet.
And that's a sixteenth of an acre?
Up to an acre is forty, what'd you say?
Forty three thousand five hundred and sixty square.
Because you want to deny that. Somewhere else along the way, like a half acre, maybe fifteen. An acre twenty above or two.
You only have ten or twenty?
It's just up to, as long as you can, like, you can have up to twenty from seven thousand.
You're saying it was half acre, you did up to fifteen?
I think we.
I feel about it being a single family attachment. I understand the not being allowed at apartments. Or if you have. If you have like a family complex. You say something about like a shared outdoor space. It can't receive. If they, for instance, there was. An apartment complex, the green space. The community wanted to have chickens. I don't know, we some dad apartment.
Let's, say you had an acre and ten apartments on it. Did it not? Welling, so it'd be like a tenth of. You sat the cat there with?
You have no, I don't think, in that instance, we don't have any. Right, or we don't have any, there's just, then there's gonna be an argument, it's not my chickens. There's no, they become, they become a nuisance. Like, nobody's chickens, so, nobody's chickens, and there's no. Nobody taking responsibility.
Doing single family residences.
Allows for, I think, yeah, allows, because I think.
Single response.
A single responsible party for these chickens. Right, you know, there's no way.
They can have chickens where they like or not.
And most times, the duplexes are like, those square. You know, lot sizes, where it runs, the lot line runs right down the shared wall. And when you own that lot line, you may own the half an acre or something behind it, but I think it's. It's still, and even then, I'm not even sure how many. I would just feel like we're, we would be creating a model best for people that.
Okay, so we're gonna wanna keep that.
I think so, I think.
I'm not, I'm not saying.
No, yeah.
Uh, what about keeping in coops, enclosures? Contained. Enclosed. Enclosed, yeah, but you, you have to. Well, nature's gonna, if you don't have a coop. Yeah, they're gonna get, maybe have a group or maybe some. Yeah. For yours and clothes. We have a fenced in area for them, but like I said, they can still free range within a. Probably like an acre we have fenced in. And then there's still some that fly over that. But at night, they go in. And I go in and check on them. I think I'm just bringing that up because there is some people at the meeting like, oh no, the chickens are trees, it's fine. Um, we have to specify that they have these. That we have to lock them in. That just seems really specific, that you have to like lock your chickens in at night. You just have it available for them, like, of course, it's gonna be better if you lock them in, right? I don't think anybody's gonna check that, where it might just be in there as a suggestion.
It's not that, you could fall back on it.
I think what they're trying to prevent is, you know, because they will roost in tree if there's nowhere to go, so if they only have, say, a. Three foot fence containing them in, if you don't have a stretcher for them to go into at night. They might hop over that fence and go into the neighboring tree. I was just thinking. And like something that you could potentially check on or see if. Must be secured. It contains, must be in the coop. Yeah, I feel like. They're gonna go under any, right?
Keep them out of that house.
We, back on number one, do we, where we all agree on keeping it a single family?
We just say chickens must be contained. I mean, it's, they've no free range. I only made a good point about the. I don't like that.
Yeah. In my neighborhood, if you put chickens in front yard, you'd mess with people. We do have the one neighborhood that's lined up, you know, and it's. I get it, like other houses I've lived in, like, you know.
If it didn't front the street.
Maybe just not right up, not all the way to the street, well, it's gotta be setback anyway. Are you standing there, it's not on the street side?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, houses that don't front the street, I mean.
Didn't make that specific to the lot size as well, because that'd be much more of an issue with the small lots or location of the house on the lot.
Could you check, say something like a non prominent location? If you're, or if you're in the spring, you wouldn't. It might have been, it's a big difference in spring. He wants to say that.
Twenty feet could still be pretty. Prominent, isn't it?
Fifteen feet, that's a side rear property. Probably in a front property line, if we're gonna take out the. Setback.
With this size, because you make out the rear yard.
Yeah, the minimum setback of fifteen feet is required from all the property lines.
Like, if I'm looking at taking out, because that can, because the reason they said side of the rear is because you can't be told. Yeah, so we make sure.
Minimum setback, fifteen feet is required from all property.
What about the, what about the, unless it's greater than fifty feet from the neighbor's household, or a hundred feet?
I think in here, we've got the coop and cage, we pull the chickens.
But I like what you, I, you're going with it, because a lot of times you would wanna put it up against your, like, say you have a fence. Use the fence as part of your enclosure. And if you've got five acres.
Right.
If, if, even if it's closer to, to the neighbor's house than your house, if it's still like. Two hundred and fifty feet away. County Street, but the different.
It's my pride.
Yeah, pride of.
Add the, the distance requirement on to that.
Yeah, I like the, how Ashwell words it words. Instead of saying it must be close to your house, it just must be within, not within fifty feet of the neighbor's house. Or you can make it whatever. Hundred feet, two hundred feet.
I'd be a little annoyed if it was fifty feet from my house and fifty feet from your house. I'd be a little annoyed if it was fifty feet from my house and fifty feet from their house. That's why I was thinking of the bottom. Still has to be closer.
Then that, that would eliminate some people.
I think where the Asheville one was saying though is, you could put it on your property line, you wouldn't have to have the fifteen or twenty feet off your property line, as long as it's that distance from the neighbor's house, but then you could potentially use your fence as part of your structure to help contain them.
Say a minimum setback of fifteen feet is required from all property lines, unless the inner enclosure is greater than fifty feet or seventy five feet or whatever from the neighbor's household and. But, you know, it would make allowance for those larger lot sizes.
Yeah, friends, why would you say it's from here to the door?
Just going downstairs. Sorry.
Twenty five.
Each one of them squares. So it's.
I'm thinking of getting up and naming my.
Thirty seven feet. From right here. So forty, forty five feet. About, you know, six one half, thirty feet, right here upstairs.
Important, yeah. Clean chicken speed though, like having a coop here and having a coop right there, not really. Much of a difference. I'm, I'm probably that close to my neighbor.
This would include the outer limits of the pen as well, right?
Right, just poop. That's why I don't know. Down the hill, I'm that close to your house. I were gonna have chickens. I guess it is the outer containment of the chicken here.
Yeah, doesn't specify whether it's. Closure.
Should then write. Well, I mean, sometimes you actually.
Yeah, so I think we could put, put these changes in writing, look at it again, our next, send it out, look at it again, our next meeting, and think about areas of town and how that would impact neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's go ahead and just run through these other ones here. What was the bottom word on this? Everybody's preference on number five.
We're gonna try to combine. Combine for five. Not meaning you permit.
You can say no more than forty. Manal, it's in flying. It's up to flying, right, so twenty was our max, instead of saying no more than. If it's necessary, but it's. Or say about.
I thought we were.
No more than one.
One into LVR and NVR, and probably more allowed.
Okay, what if it's on a big lot?
Keep it under the, an acreage thing too. And not zone involved. No rooster than downtown business.
What did you say, you said never.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the things. Oh, between seven thousand square feet. Under seven thousand square feet can you choose?
And then over an acre doesn't matter, or? I had two. I had four at one point. No, they were all, like, like sons of the father, but they do, I mean, they kinda keep, don't have enough ladies and like create their own little blocks.
If you were one, you have to face that.
I mean, I have two now, everything's civil. I had three, you know, three was more than you really want, because you need to have at least six plus hens per rooster, otherwise it does get ugly.
So it's doing a little bit.
But usually there's only one rooster that will be dominant and do the crowing, my other rooster doesn't crow because the big, the main one does. They're, you know. You should probably limit the amount of roosters.
But most people are gonna do that anyway.
Yeah.
Single rooster.
Single rooster are up to a certain size line.
Well, by twenty, if you're saying six, if rooster, chicken keeping is six or twelve, then you really only, you only keep a twenty, you really only make two roost.
Well, I was gonna say one rooster per ten hens.
Right, that's exactly, right, that's about, so about the two, you're gonna have, you know, like, one rooster per ten hens. You gotta have a big enough lot that has twenty hens.
Right.
Or twelve hens, you know, like you said, you're at six or seven hens per rooster.
Right.
So you're only, you only keep two roosters.
The problem is when they, when you do have a rooster and they're having babies or making babies, you can't limit the, I mean.
No, you can't do it.
When the chicks come, when likely, they're gonna be roosters at least fifty percent of the time, so that's how I ended up with four at one point, so we had, have to find them new.
Yeah, so I, I, like, as a rooster, I think of adult chickens. Something else, which you don't have chicks very often, which grow up, then they, the definition of rooster, right, some of those. Let's say out of bullet stage. The more things like the less, the further we are about things, the easier it's gonna be to force and less. One rooster per two, one regulation. That in general can be a point. Make a reasonable allowance.
Something as far as nation's criteria, there is a.
In that town.
Nations.
And then six would be on this. You wanna say anything about, because it's not abated?
Some kind of.
I need to look at, need to look and see, it used to be fifty dollars every three days. I don't know, there was a state law that changed how they view civil penalties.
People to sort of.
Well, any of the, in the zoning ordinance, it used to be at a fifty dollar sign up to a maximum of five hundred. I think it's her every quarter or seventy two hours in one year.
Something like this, this is not. Fowl or chickens. We go, we stand in something. I don't know if you do that since. Yeah. We work things. Get our next time. We won't look at anything, is there anything else, um, did, or did we decide, did we wanna say foul keeping, chicken keeping, poultry keeping? Change that word.
Fowl is the other one.
I think so.
Dr. Z, not.
The other day, I was curious, I don't remember what it was, I feel like poultry, like, encompass everything. But that, I thought poultry was only chickens, like, birds that you ate, it's a foul maybe.
In the, in this point, in the code, it says shall be unlocked for any, shall be unlocked for any fowl, including not only the two chickens, but to use turds, even other fowl. Unlarged.
Just wanna be on there.
The actual code.
For ranges.
Poultry is the minor.
Domestic fowl.
The major even fowl, so. Hinnies aren't under there. Well, I guess Jake's name.
That's why I was.
So I think next time we should look at the districts. But if you live downtown. Business districts.
There's lot size, solve a lot of that.
Yeah, these are like supplementary standards, right? Yes, so they could be PS. Many districts.
I'm gonna see if John can run the average lot sizes of districts.
Could it be helpful, even? Couple of, uh, examples of how something kind of. It helps me visualize.
Any other questions on that?
If we're communicating by email, we can send out information to each other that we can't, or we can skip.
Rest in peace.
In the spot.
Respond individually, but you can't do.
Right, yeah. Have there been any? Of the one that's in town since they've contained them? I don't know that, um.
But has their, has their official complaint? From anywhere, how about anywhere in the town, like, you know, gotten any complaints, noise from poultry?
Not that I know of.
Seems like, are there a lot of those types of things?
Isn't that lot multifamily, is it, they're more than you're in. Or am I wrong?
I think it's, I think it's a single, it was when, I knew people so much longer that you still live there, it's kind of a symbol.
Okay.
Now, this has been a little talk, with somebody that I know used to live. It's like he was downstairs, like, kids downstairs.
The neighborhood, I mean, it's in the exterior, it was.
They said, they said they fixed up a lot. Wasn't a chicken problem, it was a smaller animal problem.
We wanna look at beekeeping next time as well.
But is the issue. I, I don't think there necessarily was in my, I think that was just.
Those are a lot to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else?
We worked together, we did. Got our, got our money to work that day.
Cause you were here for us. It's falling last. Okay, nothing else? Second. Second, I'll do some. Thank you all for being here.
Oh, and it's a problem that maybe the game, right, we get support Thursday, Thanksgiving, and then the other one is.